Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Any announcements? Okay. Anybody here for public input? Right then, moving on. We have an application for a common victular license.
Oh, that's enough.
JRK Pizza LLC doing business as Domino's Pizza on 22-2 Fitchburg Road. Is there anybody here representing Domino's?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Rob Keen. I'm the R in the JRK Pizza organization. I couldn't attend in person, but I jumped on Zoom.
Is it possible for you to turn on your camera? If not, I mean, it'd be great if you could.
No, it's fine. I'm just sitting in my car, so it's a little not super great, but it's good.
Ah, perfect, thank you so much. All right, so this is a... Is everything up to date? Does he need anything to do?
He's all set, except he needs one final inspection with Bridget, the health inspector.
Other than that, he's good, so I would respectfully recommend that, like we typically do, approve it conditional upon final inspections.
Okay. And I have a very important question for you. When do you expect to open?
Well, a couple of months ago. Since it's... That didn't happen. We're hoping for next week, but we're waiting... I believe we're waiting for the gas to get turned on. That's essential, so I can then get the health inspection, because you can't get a health inspection without hot water, so.
All right. Well, hopefully that'll move along, because I do know some people who want to be first in line.
Yes.
It seems to be a popular thing happening, so.
So, all right. Any questions?
No.
My only question would just be, your delivery radius, where do you plan on delivering to?
I have a map in front of me, so we do have a map. It's, you know, it's line drawn, but it's essentially about nine minutes away from the location.
Okay.
The rough answer.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty good radius, actually. All right. Anything further?
No. Good for me.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that the board approve the common victulars license for JRK Pizza LLC, doing business as Domino's Pizza.
On condition?
On condition of passing a health inspection.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Congratulations, and hopefully an inspection will be done soon, and we can expect you to open up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Okay. Next up, we have a Shriver Job Corps presentation.
Madam Chair, I don't see anyone here for the Shriver Job Corps presentation.
They knew, right?
They did. Rachel had confirmed it.
Rachel was on the... There's Rachel.
No, the different Rachel.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wrong Rachel.
Our Rachel's on vacation this week.
So, which Rachel was supposed to be here? Our Rachel?
Yes, Friedlander, yes.
Oh, okay.
So she had put it together, Madam Chair, and we had confirmation they were coming, because we have the previous citation that the board did. I would suggest perhaps we... Maybe they're running behind. We could move on if they... And if they show up, if not, apologies, and we'll regroup and notify the board.
That's fine. We'll do that.
Okay.
So if they show up, we'll squeeze them in.
All right.
All right. All right then, moving on. Chuck Schultz, Facilities Director, for approval of air library roof replacement. Come on down.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Chairman, thank you for having me. I'm here to recommend the award for the library asphalt shingle roof replacement to JJS Universal. It came at a fantastic price, at $42,560. Came back with some really good references from the City of Roxbury, Barnstable Housing Authority, Revere Fire Station, and everyone said they do good work, quick, and get the job done right. So we're excited to move forward with... Hopefully, move forward with working with them.
And if approved, when do you expect them to start?
Within the next 30 days. Winter's coming soon. We've got to finalize that once we sign the contract. Once... If they're awarded, we'll finalize the time, but it's a 30-day. When do we put in the contract for them to get the work done?
Okay, good. So they should be, hopefully, before the first snow hits.
I hope so.
Hopefully. It's New England, so good snow tomorrow.
The word is, is they do a pretty quick work, so hopefully it's just a three or four-day thing to get in and out and get it done.
Now, is this a whole brand-new lu... Roof? Or is this like a second layer of shingles? What are we doing here?
We're tearing off the layer of asphalt shingles. We're putting a whole new layer of asphalt shingles on. New underlayment, a couple of new valleys where it needs to be. Second part of the project is the flat roof, the rubber membrane roof. We're doing that after we get the asphalt shingle done. Why? Because the rubber roof, they don't want to get damaged by the work with the asphalt shingles. You can't really damage the asphalt shingles with the rubber roof, so we're doing that first. And right now, we're starting to work on the pressure washing, painting of the trim, all the cleanup around the roof and stuff to get it looking pretty nice.
I knew it had a rubber roof.
Yeah, it's like 40% rubber roof.
I haven't heard of it.
But it's at... The great part is that about two to three pitch, so we're able to salvage and not have to completely replace it, because the waters always ran down it really well. About two years ago, we put about $20,000 into redoing the seams, so we're able to actually put a new rubber membrane over the existing rubber roof, give it a same warranty that we would have with a brand-new rubber roof that costs about 40% more than what we're doing. Yeah, it's pretty exciting. It'll be nice once we get all done. We had budget $136,000, and that's off of... For the shingle part of this roof, that was off of three quotes, off of comp buys and the state bid list. And it came in at $42,000 and some change, so that's... That's going to save some money.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
No. Then I'll make a motion to award JJS Universal the 26 F.A.C.O.1 Library Asphalt Shingle Roof Replacement Project.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. Congratulations on the new roof.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Chuck.
Chuck, good job.
All right. I don't see Danny here.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So the town planner, who, no pun intended, planned to be here, is not in today. So I'm prepared to just speak to the board on this matter. As the select board is aware, zoning bylaw amendments follow a specific process towards approval. And as the board is aware, the first step is for the board to vote to send the proposed bylaw articles to the planning board. The planning board is required to review. They're also required to have a public hearing. And then they send back the recommendations to the select board in the form of the approval of the warrant. And then, if approved by the select board at town meeting, the planning board is required to report on the zoning bylaw articles at town meeting, and then town meeting has to take a vote on each of the articles by a two-thirds vote. So for tonight's purposes, it was just to do an initial brief presentation to the select board, and respectfully, as in the memo, looking for you to vote to send the four zoning bylaw articles to the planning board for review. Just to be clear for the public, your vote is... It's a procedural vote tonight. It's not a vote of approval. There are four proposed zoning bylaw amendments for consideration, as put forth in the memo, and the reasons for each of the amendments in the memo were from the town planner. The first one has to do with the calculating the number of units in developments approved through the site plan review. The bylaw, this was originally put into the open space residential development, the OSRD. It was used on two OSRD projects that were approved through the planning board. The planning board felt, through that experience, that they were not getting enough protection for the wetlands and open space, so they implemented a yield plan, which is now currently used as the OSRD application. It has not been used since the Shaker Pond Road Development was approved, and the planning board is looking ultimately for a town meeting to amend the zoning bylaw, to remove this section, so that the dimensional requirements are used for how many units on any property to get to the proposed site plan. The second one is actually an amendment to the floodplain bylaw. The floodplain bylaw, as the board is aware, was approved by the annual town meeting in April. Unfortunately, no fault to the town, based on what FEMA had sent us, there was a clerical error on two sections in the model bylaw. And so FEMA wants that the two clerical errors to be corrected. We were able to have the floodplain bylaw go into effect for July 1st by having the Conservation Commission adopt all of the regulations as set forth in the bylaw, but we need to correct those two clerical issues, and we will require a warrant article to do that. So we call it a ministerial clerical issue. The next one seeks to amend on the zoning bylaw the issue of off-street parking and loading. And as the town planner has put in here, and I know that the planning board has discussed this to a degree, as has the working group, the building department previously, that one of the challenges with downtown is the issue of parking. And in many cases, many towns are starting to get rid of minimum parking requirements altogether and going to a maximum space allowed. And in doing that, they haven't seen any negative impacts. And so the amendment seeks to just target the downtown area to see what the effects of it are, and if they were... Are positive, they would be looking in the future to expand it to the West Air Village Form Base Code District on West Main Street. So this would reduce in the downtown Park Street area, the one minimum requirement for one space to half for development. The last one proposed is to amend Section 10.1.5, has to do with density bonuses. There is some confusion and ambiguity on the calculation of the density bonuses. So the way that it was written, not a criticism, but it has played out at the planning board and the building department, that there is a... There's ambiguity as to how the density bonus is calculated, and they are looking to clean that up through this zoning amendment. So again, this is a brief overview based on the memo. I am not the town planner, but in interest of moving the process forward, be happy to try to answer any questions the board may have. Again, for tonight, looking for the board to just advance these to the planning board, which will have to review in detail. They have to hold a public hearing, and then they have to come back. They will come back with the warrant articles and any recommendation, and then town meeting obviously has to vote by two-thirds.
Any questions?
Ken's here too, from the planning board, just FYI.
I don't remember.
Any questions?
Nope.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Come on down.
I just have one quick question.
Could you please state your name? Yep.
Julianne Govang, 34, Broughton Harvard Road.
Okay.
My question is only on number one, the calculating the number of units in a development during site plan review. Is that to clarify a minimum of open space versus how they can compile open space to benefit everyone, as opposed to them just adding up feeded... Footage and what have you, is my question.
Ken, can you come up and answer? Can you come up here and just answer the question?
I think the thing that's important tonight is that the planning board has not had a hearing on this project, on these articles yet. Though I understood it, and the reason I came tonight is because I thought Danny was going to be here, and I was interested in what his comments were, but I'm not here to answer any questions, because I would be misrepresenting the planning board if I did that. So the idea tonight, I thought, was simply to procedurally let the select board know that there's going to be the potential of four articles. I believe the first advertisement has been taken out for next week's meeting. I think there's already a hearing that's talking about this. So if there are questions, or any questions, will be dealt with at the hearing, the precision of the hearing in front of the planning board.
Okay, I thought you were waving your hand. I could see you waving your hand. I thought it was to answer the question.
No, I can't. We can't answer the question.
Well, no, that's fine. That's fine. It's more...
You have to wait for the hearing.
It's more of a sort of kind of a clarifying. Robert?
Madam Chair, Julianne, good to see you. What I will do is I will connect with the town planner with your question, so it responds into Mr. Diskin's point. This is just to procedurally so that the planning board, the public hearing and so forth will be able to get the detailed answer.
Excellent.
But I will get your question today.
Yeah, I was just looking for the clarification. Like, what does this mean? Having dealt with the whole thing recently.
Yep.
We want to make sure we understand completely before it gets to you guys, so we don't drive them crazy with crazy questions.
I can give you a quick answer to this. This will not... Does not apply to the...
No, I do... I understand that.
Okay.
Yes, I understand that.
Yeah, and the...
Any of your section.
Right. Yeah.
This is a separate section.
Just when I was taking notes, I wrote down not enough protection of OSRD and wetlands.
That was part of the discussion, but...
Yeah.
But it's good. Now your question's on file.
Awesome.
So you'll get your question answered.
Thank you.
And the public hearing is posted for next week with the planning board. Yep.
That's on the 9th, right?
Yep, the 9th, at 6:15.
All right.
Okay. Anything else? Oh.
Oh, she just waved it.
Oh, she just waved. Oh!
I have a question, but it's like, I don't know if it's appropriate.
Well, you can ask if you want, but it was...
I'll just have it on the record, but we're probably not going to be able to answer. It's okay if you can't, but my question... Faith Salter, 10 Winthrop. My question is, and maybe this is too broad for this meeting, is just how, when talking about these kinds of bylaws, how does the open space recreation plan fit into the consideration for the bylaws? That's the... Those goals that are in there, how are they weighted in a conversation about changes to bylaws to protect open space? Which again, maybe beyond the purview of this group.
That's a great question, but now that it's on record, we'll make sure it gets there so that you'll get your answer. Anything else? Don't anybody wave unless they mean it. Everybody's like, woo-hoo! All right then, we have a motion?
Make a motion that the select board approves sending the proposed zoning bylaw articles to the planning board for review, and for the planning board to hold a public hearing on the zoning bylaw articles.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the chair says aye. They're moving forward, and if I heard you correctly, September 9th, 6:15 PM here in the meeting room, will be the first discussion on these bylaws.
Correct.
All right. Okay. Robert?
Madam Chair, members of the select board, good evening. I hope everyone had a wonderful Labor Day weekend, and fall is soon upon us. I have in the packet are the warrants that were reviewed and approved since the select board last met on August 19th. In terms of the administrative update, just a couple of key points that also tie into some of my items for this evening. We are at that time of year when the preparations are underway for the Fall Special Town Meeting, which will be held on October 27th, and also in the very beginning phases of developing the FY27 budget. As part of that, the Rate Review Committee will have a meeting on Tuesday, September 9th at 4:00 PM to just begin an initial discussion of the transfer station rates, as well as an update on the implementation of the stormwater fee and any other business that the committee may take up on its posted agenda to be posted. The Fall Special Town Meeting, and this sort of check off number three on my report as well, I guess, would be just to remind the folks that the warrant closes on Friday, October 3rd at noon. That's also the same deadline for any citizens petitions to the town clerk, and the town clerk's office handles citizens petitions. The select board is scheduled to review and approve the town meeting warrant at the October 7th select board meeting. It is early, yet as the board just opened the warrant on August 19th. So in terms of town meeting warrant articles as of right now, and this could change, and this is just potential, there's potentially nine articles as of right now. The four zoning bylaw amendments that we just discussed, still have to go through that process. The National Grid easement for 12 Newton Street, which we'll talk about in just a moment. There are potentially two CPC articles, one having to do with some funding from the housing category for Devon's Crest, and the other has to do with funding for generators for the air housing, senior housing under the housing category. The CPC is currently reviewing those applications, and they have to have public hearings as well, so more to come on that. And then, as discussed, potentially, the borrow authorization and capital stabilization funding for the senior center building would require town meeting approval. As we get more information, as the development of the warrant is a process, we'll keep the board updated, but as of right now, that's sort of just a snapshot. Just wanted to mention on the town's IT transition plan at this time, so as of right now, the facilities department is overseeing the town's hardware, software, and network, along with the town's IT service consultant, which is Worldband. We also have some other great resources. Chief Gill's IT knowledge on the public safety side has been very helpful. The assistant town manager for right now is handling the website postings and social media postings, and the town clerk's office is handling the posting of all meeting agendas and meeting minutes as we put together a transition and a plan moving forward, so...
Has the job been posted?
We are just in the process. It has not been posted yet, because we're just making... Looking at some changes to the job description.
Shouldn't be too many changes. I mean, it was a fairly new job description, so if we can get that posted right away, that would be great. So, okay, thank you.
And then, in terms of the senior center project preparations, we've been spending a lot of time on that. I just want to point out that the finance committee per the select board is scheduled to meet on September 10th at 6:00 PM. The capital planning committee per the select board is going to meet on September 11th at 5:00 PM. The finance manager and I have been working on the financial dimension for both of those presentations, and of course, that information will be shared with the select board. I understand from the senior center building committee, just want to point out that there's a public information... They have two public information sessions for September. One is on Monday, September 15th at 7:00 PM in the Great Hall of Town Hall, and there is another one on Saturday, September 20th at 10:00 AM at the senior center. Lastly, the Newton Street Festival. This will be the fifth annual Newton Street Festival.
I thought it was the fourth.
I did too, but it's the fifth. Will take place on Saturday, October 4th, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Rain date, but it's not going to rain, October 5th, 10 to 3:00. And for the select board's meeting on September 16th, Main Street Bank, which has been our premier and generous sponsor for all five years, including this year, would like to come to present a check and take a picture with the board. So more to come on Newton Street. So unless there's any questions from the board on any administrative or personnel matters, I just have a couple of, actually really one action item tonight for the board. Okay. The second... So the second item is the approval of a license agreement with National Grid for 12 Newton Street, the Habitat for Humanity House. So the board will recall, so the project is underway, and the issue has come up to get power to the Habitat House. The Form Base Code, which was adopted, which allowed the house to be constructed, allowed the house to be constructed as it is right up to the street. Unfortunately, that's raised issues with the power lines that go across, because they're within a certain distance of the building and pose an issue as far as finishing the work, but also the overall power to the... To said building required some additional work. Originally Habitat... Originally, National Grid was going to charge Habitat for Humanity in excess of $50,000 to do this. Make a long story short, the town, working with Habitat, Carolyn Reed, the executive director, and National Grid, which we appreciate, have come up with a solution that will not only get the power to the house, resolve the clearance issue, and allow the work to continue at no cost to Habitat. National Grid will absorb that. They need to, and it's in your packet, if... In your packet, you'll see where there is an existing pole. They have to put in another pole next to 12 Newton Street, and then a pole that would be behind the town hall right before the employee parking, hence the easement, and then they would run the power over to 12 Newton Street. So that normally... That does require an easement, and an easement has to be approved by town meeting. But in order to move this forward, and we have done this before, National Grid does this a lot with other municipalities in the Commonwealth, we can enter into a license agreement, which will enable this work to get scheduled and start, because it's about a five-week lead time on this. The grant of the license agreement, the select board has the authority to enter into and to approve, and then we would have an article at town meeting that would allow the permanent easement for that pole that would go in the back for any service requirements and so forth. This will allow everything to move forward. The license agreement, I want to thank the DPW director and the town engineer for their work on it, as well as has been reviewed by town council and approved to form. So that's sort of an overview. Would be happy to answer any questions. We'd be looking for board approval for signature by the board.
Okay, so board approval will set it up, they can get power. Town meeting will just approve it into perpetuity.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Nope.
Okay, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the license agreement with National Grid at 12 Newton Street for signature by the board.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair says aye. It's approved. They can have power.
Thank you. So Madam Chair, already did the Fall Town Meeting update in my report, which was number three. And number four, as we discussed at the August 19th meeting, we will keep this on the FY27 draft budget calendar for discussion. Again, we're ultimately looking for the schedule to be approved, finalized and approved by the first meeting in October by the board. I don't know if there's any initial questions. Did... On the draft that's in there now, did remove the assumption of dates on the public hearings. We know that they will most likely occur in certain months, but we removed that, removed anything with respect, I believe, to the by-board pending reconstitution there. I know, for example, like the Rate Review Committee is meeting on Tuesday, which we will probably... They'll probably discuss their schedule, capital, and FinCom. are meeting next week, and discuss their schedule, so we can begin to, to populate it. But I don't know if there's any questions for tonight. Um, if not, uh, that concludes my report, and I thank the board for your time.
Nope, no questions. Looked good.
All right, thank you, Robert. All right. Next up, new business select board member questions. Nothing was submitted, but do you have any?
No.
Okay, I got nothing. All right. Next up is approval of meeting minutes from August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five. I didn't see any issues.
No, I saw no issues.
Um, nope. I'll make a motion that the board approve the meeting minutes from Tuesday, August nineteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as presented.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Meeting minutes are approved.
Since nobody showed up, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair says aye. Good night, everybody.